Well, good afternoon. We will kick our study session off this afternoon. Welcome, everybody. Happy New Year. We'll start this new year off with an exciting presentation by Dr. Jenny Rodriguez on secondary procedural updates, it looks like.
Well, Board of Christians, members of the Board, Superintendent Whitney, thank you for asking me to come and share with you some of the work that I have been a part of. I've been in my new role as Executive Director of Teaching and Learning for the past six months, so I have been spending a lot of time just getting out to buildings, getting to know people. I do not know all their names yet, please don't test me on that. And just kind of looking at our procedures and looking at where are some places that we potentially could streamline and make things a little bit easier for all of our This should be a familiar graphic at this point. This is really focused on our organizational structure in the district, our all-around service, and making sure that we're carrying through these values of consistency, efficiency, productivity, and our philosophy of yes and in all that we do. So in looking at secondary procedures, I really was looking for where are places that we can maximize and better serve our community. So the first one that we're going to look at tonight is the high school registration process. And we started this work by really defining what was the philosophy that we would be focusing on as we looked at some potential changes. So there's a belief statement there, students and families should experience a welcoming environment on their first visit to a school. Students should have access to educational services as soon as possible to maximize our learning time. This is particularly important at our high schools where now we're on a trimester system and there are just about an average of 60 instructional days. So every day that a student's not in class is a big component that we need to make sure that we're getting them those services. And then all staff in the process, and there's a lot of folks from the secretary at the front office to our counselors, to our nurses, we have a lot of people employed who are a part of that registration cycle, and we want them all to really take ownership in realizing the Pasco Promise, which by way of reminder is our district-wide operational philosophy and defines how we work together as a team. So it's that yes and philosophy, but also that we are present and listen, support each other, embrace change and failure, and choose positivity. Our goal in revising this procedure was that students and families would receive excellent customer service throughout the process and that students would be enrolled and begin in class within two business days. So that was the target that we set for ourselves. We developed procedures for all of the situations that you see here. So it's not just for students who are new to our district, but we also have procedures developed now for students who might be transferring within the district, boundary exemption requests that happen, and special program enrollments at both of our special programs, New Horizons High School and Delta High School. And we also included in the procedure for students who are outside our district that might be requesting to transfer in. We already have policies around this, so Policy 3115 really lays out how we do that registration, and so this is really just making sure that we're avoiding delay or denial of enrollment, which is the piece that we need to avoid. So the updates, we've streamlined the processing to really create a one-stop shop. So when a family either completes the online registration, the info snap, they could do that before they came to the school, or if they came to the school, there would be a place available where they could do that right on the site. After completing that info snap, they would provide what documentation they had, meet with a counselor to talk about what courses our student needs to enroll in, and then a tour would be scheduled either the same day or the next morning, and students would be able to begin classes that next day. We've created some documentation flexibility at the high school level. So one of the pieces that is typically requested is birth certificate. It's not something that we can legally require. We do it really as proof of residence at kindergarten to ensure that students are five years of age to start kindergarten. And at the high school level, that's really not what we need to be looking at. So if families provide it, that's wonderful, but it's not something that we're going to delay their enrollment based upon. Also, looking at immunizations, we actually have statewide system where our nurses can look up. If students have completed immunizations in the state, they can actually access those. So some families have that paperwork handy, but for others, if they've moved a lot of times, they might not have all of that. It requires running around our community, visiting other services, waiting in line, taking time off work, and paying a fee. So we really want to try and expedite that and make that a little easier for our families. And then the third one is proof of residence. So we've been very limited on the types of items we would accept as proof of residence, and we've lightened that up at the high school level some to allow really any piece of mail that's generated with that person's, the parent's name and address, pre-printed on it. So we wouldn't accept something like a grocery flyer, but really any type of bill or other thing that they might have mailed to their home. And then we did some clarity around our special program enrollments. Sometimes it's confusing for our staff at our other buildings, how does it work when a student transfers in or out of New Horizons or in or out of Delta High School? So we wanted to make sure we included that in the procedure so that all the folks that could be involved in that were aware of how that would work.
What is that? Does the state require a birth certificate eventually in order to get your money first to, like, to make sure they're not aged out?
No.
You could never have a...
Well, typically, they're not, yeah, no, we wouldn't have to. So they're going to age out eventually, but chances are they're not enrolling at 19 or 20. I suppose there could be someone that tried to circumvent that system, but most places are, they ask for, a lot of districts ask for it at kindergarten enrollment or when they begin in a district. At the high school level, though, typically, they're coming because that's where they need to be.
I guess I've seen, and it's a rare case, of course, but you know, people get in trouble, districts nationally, for a 26-year-old comes and starts playing high school football, you know, with all the 17 and 18-year-olds. There's been those cases, obviously, basketball, you know, and they come back because they don't want to try and get a college scholarship. I mean, just something to keep in mind, then.
Mm-hmm. I've seen some movies like with that premise, so, yes, okay. So the next piece that we looked at was specifically in-district transfers and looking at the procedure as well as the forms for this. We have extended the timelines for in-district transfers. What we have always had is June 1st, so we still are adhering to that, for example, for the ninth-grade lottery at the high schools where students might want to go to their non-boundary high school. But we continue to accept in-district transfer requests through the summer. Sometimes there are extenuating circumstances that really for the family and the student, that is the best option, so we're not having a hold-and-fast rule with that June 1st deadline. And then we've also taken a proactive approach for student support by trying to reduce transitions. So any kind of renewal, so students do have to reapply, families have to reapply annually, it's basically automatically approved. So if I'm a student and I want to go to Pasco High School and I start there in my ninth-grade year, my renewals would be approved each year after that with this kind of idea of once a bulldog, always a bulldog, or once a river hawk, always a river hawk. So we would want to reduce those transitions for students. We know that that is really difficult for them socially, emotionally, as well as academically, so we would allow them to stay. Parents and families do always have the option to return to their boundary high school at the start of the next year if they so choose to, but again, we would encourage them to really stick with one program throughout their high school career. The bolded items up there, just a couple of the items that we've shifted, so again, just that extended deadline, and then that annual renewal is automatically granted.
And so that's saying if you live in the boundary as a freshman and your family moves to the other school's boundary, you stay at your original school?
Yes, you could be approved to do it. Transportation is not provided in those cases necessarily. That's part of the transfer request form, as parents have to determine if they are willing to provide transportation. We do have cases where students receive transportation if there's a bus already available that goes close enough that can pick them up, but we don't run additional routes for people who are on transfers.
But you're guaranteed approval to stay at your first high school?
Yes. Yes.
What if you had false documents to start at a high school, would you guarantee to stay at that high school? Is that what we're saying here?
Well, I suppose if we determined through an investigation that a family had falsified documentation, then we could have that conversation about where the student needed to attend.
So they have to apply for renewal?
Yes.
It's not, renewal doesn't happen automatically, but if they apply, it's...
It's approved. Mm-hmm. And that's part of our current board policies, they have to apply annually. So in prior years, that was sometimes looked at as a, you know, can you stay if you're, you know, following all the rules and those kinds of things? And really, the benefit for students is really to have long-term relationships and be in a consistent educational environment. So it could be the case like Mr. Lehman was talking about where a family moves and the child wants to stay. We also could have a situation where a student might apply, for example, in the lottery process, to go to the other school. Same thing, we would allow them to continue to stay there year after year.
But they have to apply?
Yes.
Yeah, and they're aware of that, I'm assuming?
Mm-hmm. Yes, and our high schools do a good job of making sure that those families know about that form in the spring and that we kind of round those up from folks.
And this is for all grades?
So this one is for high school, attendance on transfer. And then we have a process at the middle school that's called the exemption request form, and so it looked a little bit different. So the middle school transfer process between middle schools previously has been handled just between building principals. And it was typically, you know, we wait and see where we're at in terms of enrollment in the fall to decide if there's space available, and we wanted to centralize this process. So it takes some of the lift off of buildings at a time that is really exceptionally busy for them at the start of the year. The other component that is nice about centralizing the approval is that from a principal perspective, if your family wants to go somewhere else and now I'm the one who has to tell you, you have to stay at my school, doesn't particularly set our relationship off on the right foot. So we've tried to prevent that from happening by centralizing the process. So we've done some updates to the form where they basically can turn it in at their school, they can turn it in here at the district office, it gets to us eventually, and then we go through and on a space-available basis, allow students to transfer between the middle schools. And again, this also requires an annual renewal, same idea, same concept as before with the high school. If we approve a student to transfer to their non-boundary school for seventh grade, we're going to approve for them to continue to be there in eighth grade.
What about elementary school?
So I'm the secondary supervisor, and I know that elementary is a piece that we're going to look at potentially in the future at centralizing as well, but currently it follows the same practices middle schools from before where it is building to building and the principals determine.
So we're going to have, until we revisit this at the elementary level, it's going to be different?
Yes, and that's currently what it is. Right now, the prior process was that elementary and middle schools were all done at the building level and high school was centralized. So now what we've done is pulled the middle schools in with the high schools as part of the secondary program.
I'm just thinking, to be consistent, we should look at that sooner than later if we believe that consistency is important in the sixth through, or fifth through 12th, sixth through 12th grade. We change our policy, it feels like we should do the same thing for the kinder through the fifth grade if we believe that it's important enough to change.
So we don't disagree, and that was part of the conversation we had this morning, so this is absolutely a step in phasing in that consistency. The complexity to the elementary exemption process is vastly different than dealing with the three schools that are the middle school level. So it wouldn't be something that we would implement next year, but definitely we could take a look at studying what an implementation would look like in the following year. But we had that exact conversation this morning when we were reviewing the presentation. So I think we're, we agree with you. It'll just be timing in terms of when the right time is to implement it.
One more comment on that, just family-wise. I'm not saying that at the middle through high school level, it's more of a social issue, moving the kids from school to school, but I know at the elementary school level, it can become a bigger family issue when you start at one school and you live here, you get daycare, you get care near that school, and now you move to another school. And the district tells you that you can't stay at your existing school, you can't get automatic approval, you know, we got to look at the, look at this, and we may or may not approve that, go find new daycare somewhere else. So it's, I think it's more, like this is, like I said, for the kids, consistency, but it's also important to have that consistency. Lower levels?
It's a, I think, a challenge too, in terms of the scheduling, because it looks so different at the middle and high school level versus a one teacher, one classroom model at the elementary. So those numbers can really push, it can be difficult to manage, but certainly something that we're going to look at. So the next piece that we're going to move on to is high school course enrollment and specifically looking at PE waivers. So as you will recall, we had some comment at a previous board meeting around a request to increase access to PE waivers. It's important to note, as we consider more broadly approving those, that we value the efforts of our physical education staff and their expertise in providing a valuable and quality experience for our students. Further, we recognize the importance of building positive habits, including exercise, nutrition, and effective stress management for a successful and happy life. So there are several laws and regulations that impact our ability to have PE waivers in our district, and I've listed them up here for you. The first one really just is letting us know that we can waive, and there are some specific reasons why PE can be waived. There's six that are allowed under the law, physical disability, employment, religious belief, or because of participation in directed athletics or military science and tactics, or for other good cause. There's an additional law that's in place that says we do have to have assessments, however, in place around the goals of health and fitness, and we have a WAC that is related to that that says that excused students shall be required to still demonstrate proficiency or competency in the knowledge portion of the PE requirement. So while we can waive PE, we can't waive our obligation to assess students on those learning outcomes. We have current board policy, which allows our building principals to allow PE waiver requests for the reasons that are identified in the statute, and it does not allow for a reduction of overall credits, so students would still have to obtain the same number of credits for graduation. So often, as is the case, sometimes the law leaves us with some questions. So in our K-12 system, we always look to OSPI for some guidance on the issue. So there is an OSPI recommendation for waivers in high school physical education document, and it states pretty clearly, it's not the intent of the law for a student to waive two credits of health and PE in high school. They also provide sample board policy, and in that, there are some exclusions to waivers. So they call out, except in cases of physical disability or religious belief, that waivers should not be approved for working as a TA, being an office assistant, having open periods in your schedule, or because you previously failed a PE class. One of the other questions that came up at the previous board meeting is what are the kinds of options that we're providing for our students? And I wanted to share this information with you because I think our health and fitness faculty have done really impressive work around developing a wide variety of options that could appeal to lots and lots of different students. These are all options that students can complete at our comprehensive high schools to earn the required one and a half credits in physical fitness. So everything from adaptive fitness for students who might have some physical disabilities in order to complete that. Fitness one, that's kind of probably more what you think about when you think about a PE class, but they also offer aerobics, conditioning, sports classes, walking, a lifetime sports class, and then my favorite, foods and fitness, because they talk about nutrition and get to eat. So lots of good options that students can choose from to take their three PE classes over their four years. In addition to the course options, students have some other ways that they can earn that credit. So there are zero-hour PE classes offered at both of our high schools. Both sports and fitness and weight training are offered zero hour at our high schools. We have an online course through our IPAL program. Some students who might choose to do TRITech in their junior or senior year, all of those TRITech courses have equivalencies. So some of the programs have equivalencies for health and fitness. For example, the fire science program has a physical fitness component, so students can earn their PE requirement there. And then we also have summer school programs that students can complete. This is a graphic that's also out of the OSPI guidance document, and I think this is just helpful to think about the difference between athletics and a PE fitness class in our school. So physical activity is a behavior that is obviously a component of both athletics and of the courses that students do, but physical education is really a curriculum that helps create and support that physical activity and hopefully sets students on a lifetime of physical health, on a pathway towards that. I also spent some time talking with some of our health and fitness instructors about what are the things really that students walk away with when they take a fitness class? It's not just about working out. So these are all the course components that are a part of the health and fitness classes at our high school. And so when we're talking about waivers, I just think it's important for people to be well-educated about what they're giving up when they choose to do something different. I also wanted to point out, I know there's been a lot of conversation this fall in several of the board meetings, really around the social-emotional impacts that kids are facing and around stress management, and so the mind and body benefits of regular exercise and really managing stress through physical activity, those are components that are talked about explicitly in the classes and can really be an avenue for students to help reduce their stress load. So based on all of that information, we did still want to have an application form to ease access for our families. Going back to our standard of service, this will increase consistency for approvals at both of our comprehensive high schools, and it aligns with our yes and philosophy. Based on comment at the board, parent requests, the OSPI guidance, and the state law, and feedback from our PE and health faculty, we've opted to approve, and these, basically, it's going to be a fill-it-out, complete-it, and it will be approved for you, a half credit in the junior year and a half credit in the senior year for 1.0 credit total. Families and students could utilize any of the six criteria that are listed in the statute, and they're listed out on the form. The reason that we opted to put it at the junior and senior year is really to give students an opportunity to see if they might be able to fit it into their schedule, but also recognition of the fact that for many of our students, when they hit the junior and senior year, their pathways are getting more clear, and they might have some real clear ideas about what courses they need to take or want to take for their post-high school plans. Also, when we think about things like dual credit, college and the high school program, students aren't allowed to earn the college credit in the ninth grade under our current state law. So, you know, thinking about, a lot of those classes are also offered at the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade level. So we wanted to create more flexibility at the upper end of high school rather at the beginning of high school. It does require full-time enrollment. The purpose of the waiver is really to increase the ability for students to take other classes. One of the requests we had was that for students who might want to take more AP courses, who are really on a college-bound pathway. So the concept of the waiver is not really to just create time in the schedule, but to allow students to take other coursework that they might be interested in. We would also still allow a third waiver, so that would be all of the fitness classes, but that would be considered on a case-by-case basis, and it would need to be extenuating circumstances for the principal to approve it. This one, in terms of the assessment piece, so I mentioned that that's a requirement that we have as a district. We built a portfolio of options, so students could really complete this on their own and submit it with their request form. Our PE faculty have expressed an interest in developing potentially some additional alternative assessments, so we could see some of those come to fruition next year, but they would need more time to develop those. Are there questions or comments about PE waivers before we go to the next item?
I was curious about the IPAL option there. Does it, is it aligned with the learning objectives that you showed on the previous page? And it, it's just on your own exercise as well, and logging that you exercised?
It's logging. There's some reflection pieces about the logging, there's fitness goal setting that occurs in that class, so it is aligned to the same components. My daughter actually completed that class, so got to see firsthand what that course looks like, and I do feel like she met a lot of the same outcomes she would have if she'd taken the class.
And a full-time student at the comprehensive high school can also concurrently enroll in that IPAL PE option?
Correct. Mm-hmm. We do have students who are dual-enrolled really between our high school and IPAL. We have students that do part-time IPAL, part-time running start at CBC or Wazoo Tri-Cities, so, and kids who do TRITech and IPAL. So there's really, any kind of blend of program that a student or family would like to do, they can put that together.
Can you go back to the slide where you had the options of classes? So that really warmed my heart. So, so in general, my take on this is I, so I'm very much in favor of PE. I think we need more of it, not less, like especially in elementary schools. I think the, it's a tragedy that we're taking away recess and free play time, especially for the youngest of kids, thinking that more classroom instruction time will somehow help them, and actually it's worse for them. And the countries where they do more free play and fun activities and games and physical movement, they do actually much better than we do in our country. So I really think I'd like to see more, especially in our, in our elementary schools. Now, obviously, we're talking about high school right now. So when I was in high school, you know, you had ninth and 10th grade PE, and then I think junior, senior, you may have had some flexibility. I did, most kids did weights. If you did sports, you would do a weight hour, and this was like the best part of my day, right? So, and I didn't even mind school. I liked school, but it was just exciting and fun to be active, and it felt good. So this is, this is amazing. So there's so many options, and I didn't know there were this many options. And I did, a year or two, I had a patient, the mom wanted me to sign, write a letter and sign a waiver that this patient should, this student should not have to do PE, and I said, well, no, of all students, you really need it. Like, there's, it's not just about being active, we're talking about your future health, and, you know, you could be a great engineer, but if you're not healthy, it doesn't matter if you can't show up to work and you, or you die early because you have, that's not good either. So that all being said, I do like, I think we need flexibility. And so I don't know if you could comment briefly on this, because I believe that it's more than just being active, there's curriculum that's valuable, and we have our physical education teachers and staff and faculty that do a great job, that it's more than just going, walking. I mean, there's so much more to our health than that. So I'm wondering if you could comment briefly on kind of the waiver versus the cross-credit, kind of like with the marching band? And so I, and I think that may be something that I know I can mix up in my head, and that maybe some people would as well. It's that they don't want to not participate in these type of activities or the curriculum, but they just want to get credit. If I'm doing three sports throughout the year, can I have, maybe meet the requirement through that and then some, maybe some curriculum, however, I don't know, the IPAL or however other ways to get the other piece, as opposed to like waiving it, which makes it seem more of like, oh, I can't do it, just waive it for me. It seems more of like a cross-credit type, you know what I mean?
So the waiver is a little different than like an equivalency crediting process, so like the marching band that you mentioned has to do with equivalency, and I would say that's another piece that is kind of on the list of procedural types of things that we need to review and take a look at. In terms of the waiver, you know, versus the IPAL, with the IPAL option, one of the requirements is a certain number of hours of logged of physical activity. So participation in athletics at the school could be logged as all of the physical activity time, and then they would get the other components really around health and fitness, the goal setting, you know, really reflecting on where am I at with my own health and where could I make some improvements, and tracking that over time. Okay.
Is it possible that we can ask a question? I'm not sure about format. It's okay to ask.
So I think, James, if you want to wait until we're done with our presentation, we can certainly see where we are on timing. We will all be here when this is over, and you can certainly ask any one of us questions.
Okay.
I agree too. I don't, I don't love an idea of a waiver. I feel like physical fitness is really important. I, I do, in high school, when I was in high school, I took, I took sports all year round, and there were other classes that I would like, have liked to have taken. I, I majored in mathematics and minored in art, and trying to get all of my AP classes as well as all of my art classes, you know, I didn't get to take sculpture in high school, and it was really frustrating because here I'm taking, you know, PE every day, and then I have to be in a PE class. It seemed very repetitive. So I don't, I have a hard time wanting, I think we should be really careful about granting too many PE waivers. I think it's important that our kids learn physical fitness. I think that, but I do like the idea of taking into account that they are getting two hours of exercise every single day. So I think the IPAL version might be really helpful in getting both pieces, because they are, because they are. I would have jumped on that opportunity, you know? Set a goal, okay, I'll exercise two hours a day for a year, you know, or whatever, nine months. So I think that is a great alternative so that you can, and up to, you know, up to two, I wouldn't even mind three. I understand the importance of health, and you can't really do that by exercising. So having those, I think that's a great idea. So I think that's a good option for, for kids who do feel like, do I really need to exercise another 50 minutes after I'm going to go after school and... and exercise for two hours?" So, that makes more sense.
Yeah. I think the IPAL option is nice for student athletes, because it does, it, it's not a huge lift in terms of the written content that they need to take care of. Like, the bigger hour commitment is the physical activity, so I feel like it is manageable even with a busy student athlete schedule, and those kids are really busy. It does allow them also to get fitness put onto their transcript, which is nice and just demonstrating that you're a well-rounded student. But for other students, students who might be in a similar situation to what you were in, this could provide some flexibility, and maybe they would take one PE class, but maybe they would choose to waive the other two in favor of AP classes or art classes. I know in the conversation that was had at the board previously, you know, one of the, we're not just talking about students maybe who are AP and want to take five AP classes at a time. We're also talking about students who might be in some type of intervention course or special education services or those types of things where they have really lost the ability to have as much choice. And so, this could be a choice that they could make, and maybe they would like to take an art class instead of a fitness class for one of the courses. But we really would recommend students complete the health and fitness classes, but this is an option, could be an option for families and students that want to take it.
So, you mentioned health and fitness. Is that different than PE?
So, health and fitness, students are required to earn two credits of health and fitness. It's a .5 health credit and a 1.5 fitness credit for graduation in our state.
And these would be the fitness part? This is not the health part, right? Health is a separate course. So, they have to have three classes, basically, of?
PE.
Of PE.
Mm-hmm.
So, I've got to tell you that I took weights when I was in high school too, and then I think it was my senior year, I decided I'd take foods and fitness as well.
Ah, nice.
The football coach wasn't too happy, but I said, "Hey, if I can't put weight on lifting, I'm going to do eating." So.
Yeah. Lots of great choices for kids.
So, I, I look at these, and I think there's, there's some real benefit of this, lifetime sports. I mean, if you're playing football, you, for most of us, high school, we're done. We're not playing football after high school. There's other things that we can do, and certainly, this gives us an exposure to those other activities. And so, if there's curriculum outside of the, you know, just the physical part of it, then that would be important, certainly. But I, I am, I am in favor of getting credit for the physical activity that they are doing. I recognize that there's a little more to it than just going and being active. There's some introduction to things that, that are beyond that. But, but I, I do think we should make allowance for those who are involved in sports. And so, I, to the best that we can do that, I, I think that is a, a fair request.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment. And there was some concern about maybe their other local districts had more flexibility with that. Is this more in line with what other local districts do?
This is more in line with our, with our other local districts. One of our neighbor districts has, you know, a very similar waiver form, and then in terms of the assessment, they have a different assessment. It's not a portfolio, but students actually have to go and do physical fitness testing, written and the actual physical performance, and they have to pass that before the waiver is approved in that district. And one of our other neighboring districts, it is pretty easily approved, but they have all the same requirements around full-time schedules. And so, students aren't allowed to have like open periods or to have a half a, half a year schedule when you're a senior. Those kinds of things, they have to show and demonstrate, "These are the other courses I'm going to take." And it's also in their policy that really the intent is to just waive one of the three PE classes. That's not to say that there aren't cases where they waive more, but that is really what they've put out as their intent.
Just so I'm understanding this, so a half a credit would be two trimesters?
One class, one trimester.
One trimester?
Mm-hmm. So, to earn my, all the PE I need to take, I could just take PE my freshman year. Or I could take one trimester my ninth, 10th, 11th grade year.
So, basically, we're, we're asking one trimester per year for each of the four years. It's not a, it's not a two-trimester?
No.
Class to get a half a credit?
No, it is not.
Okay. Thank you.
How difficult is it to enroll in IPALS in order to, in order to get a credit through IPALS, you know, along with sports that kids are already taking? Is that a difficult process or is it fairly easy?
It's fairly easy. We have a really welcoming staff at our IPAL program, and so, really, a student or a family could go over and meet. They'd meet with their high school counselor first and then go over and meet with Dawn Bastin Hernandez, who is the high school point of contact at IPAL, and then she basically gets the course set up. And then students can really complete it online. Ms. Bastin is there for support for students that might need it, but some students can just kind of click right through and, and get their work done and log their hours and turn them in, and it can be done on the same timeline of a trimester.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the last one, click back down here, is our district course guidebook. So, we are currently in the process of aligning into a single high school guidebook, which will be in use for our next school year. We're working on aligning the course titles, codes, and descriptions as well as offerings, although that is somewhat based on facilities between our two comprehensive high schools, Chiana and Pasco High. We're hoping that this is going to help us with our scheduling. So, it's been challenging as we've moved from a semester-to-trimester system. We've learned a lot of things this year, and one of the things we found is that we've got prerequisites which aren't necessarily in common between the two high schools. That's creating some difficulties, and then also increasing unlinked two-part courses. So, for example, ninth grade English, there really is a focus around persuasive writing in one term and around expository in another term. You don't necessarily need to learn expository before you learn persuasive. So, the one place we don't see that that works so well is math, but you can see in many other content areas, things do not need to come in a particular order for students. So, unhinging those two-part courses is also helping. We're also working on developing an electronic registration system. So, the guidebook really is the, the first step. The next piece will really be looking at the instructional elements. So, once we have the course titles and descriptions aligned, then the next step will really be looking at, what are the priority standards at our two high schools for that course? Thinking about the assessments, thinking about potentially supplemental materials, and really making sure that students are receiving an equitable education, no matter where they take the course within our district. And that is the last one that I have for you.
So, with this electronic registration, are you going to be able to, as parents, and take your students and say, "Hey, what do you want to do?" And it's, and you're going to be able to register right online?
So, you'll be able to register online. I believe that they're still going to be doing that in the classroom, but our goal is to have those guidebooks launched mid-February so that families and students have enough time to really look through, think about the pathway that their students on, think about what are the best choices. And then in the month of March, so the second trimester ends March 5th. Once trimester three begins is when, at the high schools, they'll be doing the course request, so then they'll actually go online to complete that. And then our high school counselors also will visit our middle schools the last two weeks of March, right before spring break, to gather incoming freshmen, and then we'll be able to work on the schedules after that.
Great. I would, oh, as a parent of college kids, I feel I have more, I see my kids' schedules and what they're taking more than I do at high school.
Yes.
I find something wrong with that picture.
Uh-huh.
And so, you know, when we went to the, there's a, in the past, my, all of my kids have gone to Chiana High School. Have, we've gone to, I don't know, freshman thing where they go, they fill out what they want to take. But a lot of my kids are like, well, I mean, I have some kids are like, you know, "I'm doing this, I'm doing this." They don't need help, but some of them do. And sitting there and going through, that's really helpful, but it's only in the freshman year. So, having families more involved, I can be more supportive when I know, you know, what they're doing, how they're doing it. Anyway, I, I would love to get families more involved. So, that's why I was like, online registration, that would be great.
Yeah.
But it sounds like it's still going to be done a lot in the school, but the, the parents will be able to review it at home before they do it in the school?
Yes. And I'm really excited about it too, because I think it's going to provide the opportunity to have those really important conversations at home about what are you thinking about taking? How does that align with your goals and, and having some options to choose from? We're also adding to the guidebook all of our special education courses, and I feel like that's a place like, you get, you have a title on the report card, but you don't really know, what is that class about? What do they do in that course? So, having that as a resource for families, I think, is really important too. We're also working with CBC, and I don't know that we'll have it done for next year's guidebook because we're on a pretty short timeline at this point, but we're in conversation with them because they're doing a lot of workaround pathways from credential programs to AA programs, and they even have some bachelor's programs now at CBC. And so, really talking with them about aligning some pathways for kids where they could really see at the ninth grade, where do I start? What classes maybe should I take in high school if that's the path I want to get on to at the, at the community college? And then eventually, my hope would be we'd add Wazoo Tri-Cities too, but that's a, that's a couple of years down the road. So, really having not just the courses, making sure we have all the courses even in the book, but having some more information for students and families around pathways, career clusters, what kinds of careers fit into that, what kinds of coursework would prepare you for that, so that students can really start hopefully making some educated choices about what they want to take. Sometimes they still do it based on what their friend sitting next to them signs up for, but we hope that this will provide opportunity for families to really have those meaningful conversations ahead of time.
Are you going to send out links like in emails? Or is it just going to be on the website for parents that happen to know about it? How are you going to, how are you going to let the parents know that this is there?
We're still working on our full communication plan, because we're still working on the guidebook at this point. And then as soon as we have the guidebook completed, the next step is translation. And then as soon as that's done, then comes the communication plan. So, for certain, it will be linked on our website, and then we'll be working with our comprehensive high schools on how do we roll that out, as well as our middle schools, because we want to make sure our eighth-grade students and families have that same opportunity to review that information before they actually sign up for courses.
And they're still going to have that freshman, whatever, where they sign up for courses? Are they still going to do that, or is it going to be different?
They will probably be signing up for the courses at the presentations at the middle schools, but that's a piece still to be worked out with the high school staff.
And that's tough, I mean, that's tough too, because there's so many times my kids sign up. It's like, "Wait a minute, you need this, and this, and this, and then we have to go to the counselor's office and go over all of this."
Yes.
Like, it would just be really nice if it was streamlined to the point. And quite frankly, that takes up a lot of time at the counselor's, a very valuable time.
Yeah.
When, you know, as a parent, you kind of have an idea of what your kids need, why they need it, whatever. And, and it's not like you're going over your child, it's just your child doesn't, doesn't know. It's, "Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I was going to do that," you know? Anyway, so, I would love to eliminate that part of it so that we can save the counselor's time, get the kids where they need to be initially, so.
Yeah. It's a challenge, I think, to, for some of our families probably to be able to do that and help their students through that process potentially. So, I think it's really important that we still have an opportunity embedded in the school day where students can speak with high school counselors and perhaps get the guidance that they need to get. And then for our students who are blessed and have families who can help them with that, providing that information ahead of time hopefully will help.
Is, is this same thing being created for the middle school level?
No, we don't have a guidebook at the middle school level. It's not something that we've had. It's certainly something we could look at, but it's a pretty big endeavor, so I would have to say that will not happen this year.
And it's just a future request that aligns with other conversations we've had as a board to communicate with families to know what the, what the opportunities and pathways are for their kids also at the sixth, seventh, eighth grade level. And then one more request for the future, maybe this one can happen on this rollout. Can there be links on this, or this is a request, so that as parents are looking through that, they can request a meeting with the counselor along with their students so that you can have, you know, we've talked about, well, maybe counselors should be meeting with students and families with all of them, but as a starting point, could we have a request where as you're going through this, you say, "I'd like to schedule it" and be able to push something so that a counselor gets ahold of you, and prior to your student going in and registering, you can have a, you know, parent-student counselor conversation on the pathway?
I think it would be challenging for, for a couple of reasons. One, I think, at least for this year, we're still looking at having students complete that request form at school. And so, so kids probably aren't going to check that box even if you tell them to.
Well, I'm talking more about when parents and students sit down at home prior to the student filling that out, a month prior to, and the parents talking about a pathway without really understanding it. And if they have a question, say, "I would like to talk to a counselor prior to my kid enrolling." That, that's the timeframe I'm thinking would be beneficial.
I don't know if we could have that set up this way this year, although I do know we have, where parents can go on the website and request, "I have a question about," and then it gets linked to the right person. And then, of course, they could contact the high school or middle school counselors if they had questions as well. So, those folks are available. The course request process too is a request process, so it doesn't always guarantee that that's exactly what students will get. So, part of our electronic process will be asking for first choice, second choice, in particular, content areas, so that we can do our very best to schedule students. But with as many as we have, it can be challenging to get everybody exactly what they want at the time that they need it.
So, on these registrations, or certainly, there's information there that they can talk to a counselor. We provide contact information, and so, if some parent does want to know, then.
Yes. And typically, the counselor is there in person to talk with the students as well.
I'd just like to see that conversation happening with the family, at least the freshman year one time, versus what we have now where it's, I, I talk to the student only because I think it's even more important now than ever to get the family linked up in that first year or even in the eighth grade year, to talk about the pathways so that you don't get to the sophomore or junior year, and the parent comes in and says, "What, what's going on?" "Oh, well, your student picked that pathway. You weren't involved. We never got you involved in it because that's not what we do. We only talk to the student right now, unless you come in and take initiative yourself." I'd like to.
I think it's a great ideal. I think, you know, a 600 to 700 freshman coming in to ask a counselor to have that many meetings in our current structure would be difficult, so I think it's something to work towards.
I hate that excuse, but.
Well, we have to educate parents, Scott.
I, I get it.
Yes.
I'm sure.
700, 100 meetings is time-consuming.
Would do that, but, but we could put, we could put a big button on the website, and people would, "What's that button for?" If parents aren't interested, it doesn't matter how many buttons are on there, it's not going to happen.
Right.
So, somehow, we've got to educate.
Give the opportunity.
But if, yes, but if parents are interested, it would be nice to have a better way. I mean, I'm just, I remember one of my children taking technology like his senior year. He didn't know how to type. "Why aren't you taking to-" "Oh, I'll do it next year, I'll do it next year." It's like, I should have gone in with them and changed it. Some of the things that I felt like were really important, but as I look back through his, that was more important than, I wished I would have forced it. So, things like that, it's just so nice to have parental input because kids don't think through why I might need to know how to type to get through high school.
Right.
You just don't. So, and, and I know that's supposed to be a freshman course, but sometimes things get moved around, but anyway, so, yeah. I mean, I just, any way that we can allow parents to have more input if they want is great. And I, I understand some parents don't, some kids don't need it. So, I think that's.
Well, I think some parents, it's not a question that they don't, but they perhaps aren't, they might not be able to for a variety of reasons to, to take that into account. And I do think having a single guidebook that really has some additional resources for families is a, is a really good place for us to start, because in part of that communication plan as well can be to middle school staff. And so, really, as we think about this as a, as a system long-term, that information could be available at spring conferences at middle schools, right? There could be ways to really try to make sure that every parent that we can has the information.
And then at the middle school, there's very few electives. And so, I don't know if we'd ever have to go to this length at the middle school, but it would be kind of nice to have a list of what the electives were, because I don't even know how they choose those electives. They just land in them, and, and even a list of, this is when you, you know, try out to be in this band or this choir or whatever, those extracurricular whatever activities. The sports is really well-laid out online. I've had a harder time finding the rest of it. So, anyway, all of these I know are, just as a parent using the information, this is the information that would have been much more helpful for, for me.
And I think there's some other work happening in the district along those lines too. So, I know you guys are aware of the work Megan Nelson has done with our math pathways and really trying to demonstrate and align how the courses fit together in a sequence and how kids kind of have on-ramps and off-ramps for the, for the various levels. And so, I know that that's work we're continuing to do and, and bring to a full K-12 spectrum. So, I think as those things are happening, that also hopefully will provide the information that family needs about what the choices are, not just at the high school, but at the lower levels too.
I think over the last couple of years too, in interfacing with the board and us working collaboratively to kind of look at our processes and procedures, it's really around expanding our perception of parent engagement. Parent engagement doesn't always mean coming to donuts with dads and muffins with moms and pancake breakfast. I mean, all those things are wonderful and a way to connect with kids. I mean, all those things are wonderful and a way to connect with kids and community and the schools, but it's also empowering our, our parents with information so they can have that dialogue at home. So we definitely hear that as an interest of, as the, of the board and has been collectively over the last three to four years. It's an interest that we have too and we'll continue to work with our experts in our buildings about what are the best, best vehicles, venues and communication tools to make sure that happens.
Thank you. All right, is there, so students, do you want to weigh in on any of this conversation we've had today? Any great insights? Any things that would have been helpful to you in hindsight or?
Well, honestly, I don't know because in my high school, we don't take PE or anything like that. Although some people find it difficult to enroll our school after the sports due to the fact that they go to their home life school. Other than that, I don't think. I just like the different options. Like if I would have had some of those when I was a freshman, I would have instead of having to run stairwells.
I agree. High school, do what you like to do. Much more likely to do it long-term.
Okay. Board members, any other comments, questions? All right, so we've got a few minutes left. I think, Mr. Hales, did you have a question you want to ask?
I'd like to say, I think this, what you said with this resume PE waiver, I think it's very nice. You've done a good job. I think you're ninety percent there. And you've done some good research looking at what the other school districts have. It's a, it's a great improvement, which I think will help a lot of people. I don't think there's ever a negative part about adding flexibility if you can do it. I know it creates some challenges, but if you can create flexibility, that's a very positive thing that can allow a lot of people. I think there are a few things that maybe could be done still to improve and maybe guidance, some maybe this little loophole or where it would hurt individuals. And I think, I think like Amy was saying about adding flexibility for different situations, there's, it's generally the person going to try to make PE, I'm sure the principals know a lot better, there's maybe one or two, there are a few people who are just trying to get out of things. But a lot of times it's a, it's kids who are overachievers and high performers that are trying to make things fit in so they can get everything that you need to prepare for college. So my students, my, my kids, I have a senior and I have a sophomore at Chihuahua High School, and they're both AP students who love sports and love extracurricular activities, but you become limited to the point where something has to go. Where it's nice if they're already doing PE, that this could be the thing and they're learning this, this could be the thing that could be waived where it's still being met. So I like this idea and I, I think you have a really good setup. I'm here, a couple of the questions I guess I had about, is, I saw you listed up there, there were eleven different options for PE, different PE classes. My question is, how many classes are there offered for high school for those options?
How many sections of each of the eleven courses?
Yeah.
Would vary by trimester and student enrollment.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the biggest challenges that my, my kids have had. We've tried to do the zero hour PE as much as often as possible through the weightlifting class, but there's one section because the, the weight room is limited to thirty kids.
Right.
And, and so if you have a freshman, freshman doesn't get priority.
Mm-hmm.
So freshmen get bums. And so if you're going to require them and say, well, they can only weigh point five per year, then that freshman year you can't get in, then you're already, can be kind of down a, down a pathway that's going to cause some problems. But you're limited by size. You can only have one class per hour, and then if that coach, he has a number of, certain number of sections that he can teach as his workload, then although there's many different options, there may be only one or two sections per option for high school. And so then if you're taking an AP class during that class, you can't do it.
Mm-hmm.
And so that does kind of become an issue. It's wonderful that they have those options, but those options just because of feasibility, not everybody is able to take advantage.
Right, and, and we could say the same about social studies electives, English electives. It's really based upon course requests from students, so we try to offer sections that match the requests from students. But there are always going to be some schedule conflicts and that's where the hard choices come in.
It looks great though to have eleven options, but the number that are actual viable options is greatly decreased. For my kids, being able to take a zero hour of anything, the only zero hour classes offered at Chihuahua High School are, it varies depending on the trimester, but generally is there's a weightlifting class and there's a music class choir, and there is occasionally a either history or a tech lit class. Those aren't offered every trimester, but it seems that there's maybe three options where you exhaust the option of tech lit that's done for your whole high school career. You exhaust the option of that history class that's done, and then that PE class, that weightlifting class fills up. And so it would take away from those mainstream classes where the AP and the other ones are offered during the daytime. None of those are offered in the, in the zero, and so it would, you have to choose what's, what's going to go in AP class or go in PE. And so that would be.
Is there not a fitness class? I thought you said there was a fitness class.
Health and fitness, yeah.
Offered just as regular.
Yeah, so Julie Solomon is one of our health and fitness teachers from Chihuahua High School. I'm going to defer to the board because this is their meeting.
I can stand up for say your time. I can speak to that.
If you want to speak, we can hear you. If you're honest to see you, you should stand up.
I love it. Currently at Chiu, I'm the department chair at Chihuahua High School. My name's Julie Solomon. I also have a son who's a sophomore at Chihuahua High School who plays sports, and my daughter just recently graduated. So I completely understand the choices parents make. My daughter, when she was in high school, did windoltsong bowl, she went to Indianapolis for Music for All. She did AP, called in the classroom. So I understand as a parent, you're always weighing that, you know, the course load versus sports versus high performance music programs. So I understand that piece looking through the inner lens. Currently at Chihuahua High School, we offer zero hour weights, we also, also offer zero hour health, and we also offer zero hour home fitness. We had, last year we met as a PLC and made a decision, we would not deny freshmen the opportunity to take a, a zero hour class, nor to take zero hour weights if they're able to get to school. For some time, sometimes for freshmen, transportation can be, can be an issue depending on how, on how they're getting to school. Ironically, our zero hour numbers this year are the lowest they've ever been. Our enrollment drives are zero hour. We don't create zero hours, the numbers drive how many sections we can open. And our teachers are flexible, so like in case we're getting more requests, then we can go ahead and open up another section if we need, if we need to, or look into that to make sure that is accessible. When we went to the trimest, went from a semester to the trimester, we felt it was really important not to jam up the kids' schedule by making them take two trimesters for one PE credit. So currently they only take one trimester for one PE credit. Theoretically, my daughter ended up doing it, I think she did every PE credit zero hour because of music plus her heart, she did it at the school. My son, he's like, I don't think so. He's like, sleep is currently his thing. But, but as a parent, you're always kind of weighing, okay, you know, where can you put that in? And I understand the concern you have, especially when you're in some of the courses where, like you're saying, you know, okay, we can take that zero, or no, we can't, so we have it, hit it later in the day. But that is our current model.
Wait, when you say one, one trimester equals one credit, did it one trimester equals one half of a credit?
One half credit. So if you take freshman PE, that's one box. Then you can take that next trimester, take a weight training, that checks another box. And so right now we're offering weight training, health and fitness, and a health class, which is separated, that's the classroom portion of that for zero hour. We would look into doing it after, our gym gets pretty full after six, six hours over because of sports. And so that's why we haven't offered PE after because that's what's involved in, you know, like wrestling and things such, but we could offer a later health class if that were, if our classrooms do, do have problems. And we're always trying to increase our flexibility to accommodate students, to accommodate the concerns that kids have, to try to pick everything that we get in.
I think that's a great option too, you know, missing that, that they allow freshmen once a week, because that really was a challenge. So I'm glad that, trying to do a lot of that really helps. Do that freshman get to do a class.
Yeah. That was a conversation we had, and maybe just like, like you mentioned, increasing that communication out, letting people know, hey, this is a choice for your kid. Have a conversation with your parents, this makes sense for your family, because it is a commitment getting up early. If you've ever done a block on sports, forget it, you're, you're committed. You're getting there early. And so, and so we're just trying to increase our flexibility as well, so maybe that way students don't, yeah, families don't feel like they're forced to maybe, you know, having to wait PE, you can let them in, especially for the stress management part, our kids need the stress management. They need to be a kid. Kids are kids. Like a little bit.
Did you have a comment? It's Ashley, right?
Yes. My son, two of my sons go to Chihuahua, and my freshman Ashley was denied, not wait, this year, this year, zero hour. And he said they weren't open, he didn't prefer anybody else. Were they open for freshmen?
We, we also have the same thing, the counselor told us that no freshman can't take it, but then the next semester we found that there were freshmen actually in that class. That was, that was about a year or two ago.
I think that's another piece that, that having a single guidebook will be really helpful, so parents will be able to see exactly what the prerequisites are for courses and what grades are permitted to do that.
That wasn't my only comment. I want to speak on the IPAL piece. The IPAL is great and super easy to get into and everything, but my son, who is taking three AP classes and doing two hours of sports every night, and then having to do an hour to two hours of homework for each of those three AP classes, and practice before school with wrestling, he doesn't have time for anything else. And so to throw in that IPAL, it's a lot more work than what is being let on. The kids have to go in and meet with the IPAL instructor once a week for at least a half an hour to an hour. They have to read and do, do their logs of what they've done, they have to set goals, they have to fill out charts, they have to read chapters and do a little report on the chapter. And so then it's like another hour of homework each week that he has to fit in with his other three to six hours of AP classes in sports before and after school. So that's just my take on it. I think IPAL works for some people that don't have anything going on after school.
Is IPAL, does that track with the trimester?
Yes.
So you started the trimester.
It's the same schedule as the other schools.
Do you really have to go in half an hour every week and meet with the instructor?
They have some parameters, but I've found Ms. Bastin to be very flexible depending on individual circumstances, so they really do work very hard to try and tailor that. I know she's done phone conferences with kids, Skype calls with kids, and really the concern is around making sure they're on track. So for a student who's really getting the work done, I think that there would be more flexibility around that requirement.
Well, Jenny, my recollection is that some contact time is required under the law for alternative.
It's, it's a, it has.
Laws, and I believe there's some contact time that's required under the law. So it's not just a Pasco School District requirement that they have that individual contact, but it's, and I don't know how many minutes it is in the law, but there is minutes required.
So in those situations, a lot of teachers are the coaches. Could that be contact under the law? Could that meet that requirement? You know? Anyway, I mean, that's one thing I think we could look into is, quite frankly, I've had our kids do the IPAL version rather than the waiver. And if we could streamline the IPAL version a little bit more so that these kids could learn what they need to and getting a PE cred, credit, so that they could do that rather than just, I think that would be a win-win situation.
I think the course and the curriculum are adopted and in place already, so I don't know about cutting down on the requirements of the course in terms of the, you know, in terms of like a seat time requirement. I think there's some pieces that are required, but I, again, I think that they try to be very flexible to meet families' needs with that program. So I really would encourage if families had questions about the flexibility to meet with Ms. Bastin Hernandez or to meet with their high school counselor, just to get more information. But I do think for some kids, you know, having a waiver form and process in place that's really clear and available and easy for families to complete, you know, I think for some students that's maybe going to be the option that they want to take.
I just wanted to say that I'm currently enrolled in IPALS right now, so I'm doing that, like, I'm not taking a PE course, but I am doing courses through IPALS. And from my experience, Dawn, she's really good about working with you and helping you, and she'll, if you need time and if you, as long as you're showing that you're constantly working and you're making progress in your course, she'll work with you on making sure you complete it. So even if the trimester is ending and you still need more time, she's really good about working with you, so.
That's good.
Steve, can I say just a couple of.
Sure.
Ideas on this, the PE waiver? One thing, I think that generally it's, it's very good and it, it does seem much more in comparison to what the other school districts are doing. A couple of things, suggestions that if only point five per year can be waived, what are the kind of things allowed to transfer students? Somebody who transfers in who maybe hasn't taken PE, who may be in their senior year, that might be something to consider. Another thing is, is there an appeal process? That is built in? An appeal process would be kind of nice. Also, on the little asterisk where it says exclusions for PE waivers, a student is not eligible for a PE waiver if one or more of them apply and one of those is used in an open period. And they're, the designation open period is used by high schools as kind of a blanket, which sometimes a work-based learning, it depends on how that's categorized, or a religious release time would be maybe in the computer as an open period. But if you're going to deny somebody a PE waiver because they have a class going or a religious, a religious release time, you might be opening yourself up to a lawsuit because of the, there are federal protections against release time. And to deny it for that purpose, there might just be maybe some changing of the wording or some, it clearly, it makes good sense to have something in there because you don't want a person just taking a free PE hour and then say, I don't want to do a PE just to be, go home an extra hour earlier, asleep and longer. But the wording to make it so that it didn't exclude a kid who has a legitimate open period.
Does, isn't work, one of those, it says work, you can?
Work is different than work-based learning, so just to clarify, work-based learning, a student does that, it's actually a course, it's listed on their schedule and they earn credit towards graduation with that experience. Work and this kind of language in the PE waiver language from the state would be, you know, maybe I'm supporting my family and so I need to work part of the time. Now, for everything other than religious objection or physical disability, OSPI recommends that we adhere to those three exemptions, that open period, meaning not a full-time schedule. So I guess that would be a clarification, is that the student is enrolled in five courses on our five-period trimester day. That's not to say the student might be in a zero-hour class, have a period open in the day where they're doing something off-campus that's not credit-bearing, that would still be full-time enrollment at five, five courses at a time.
I just wonder what OSPI's reasoning for that is. Do they just not want delinquent kids out roaming the street or is there, is there a need?
A lot of it might be financial, because just this last year, they changed the way that the monies are allocated. It used to be that five, well, in a non-trimester system, five out of six was considered full-time enrollment and you would get full allotment of funds.
Okay.
But now they changed it this year to six out of six is a full-time allotment for funds, for funding.
So.
And so that, that could be.
So the district potentially loses out on some money if we don't have full-time students, okay?
I think that.
You don't just want a kid just taking, trying out, doing nothing.
Well, I, yeah. I mean, if that's the, the logic, then I think that's fairly easy to work around if a kid's doing something constructive, but just having the kid say that I'm going to do something constructive doesn't, doesn't cut it, but.
There are funding impacts, but I think the OSPI guidance is really that they believe health and fitness education is important, that's why it's a graduation requirement. So if a student doesn't have public education courses at a point in their schedule, that's a slot where they could be taking a, a physical fitness class. a slot where they could be taking a, a physical fitness class, so, um, the guidance, I think, is really around the fact that if we're gonna waive a requirement for graduation, it's because you're, you're taking a full load, you're taking that extra AP class, or taking that art course you really wanted to take.
Well, I would hope we're not just waiving it and not having them do something to make it up, but for those students who are in athletics and they are physically active, there may be another component to it, but I wouldn't expect it's another full class to, uh, to get some PE credit, but, but I am in favor, not just in PE, but in anything, where a student has the ability to challenge the class and, and get the credit without having to be in the seat, that we make that available, but that's a discussion for another day.
That's a much longer discussion for another day.
I saw one thing, maybe this would be helpful, maybe not, you can throw it out if you like, but one thing that the original school board did that I thought was really good wording and good language, is the school board put in, into the policy, uh, a quote similar to, it is the intent of the school board to da, 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 and they stated in writing what the school board's intent was, which made it a lot easier for the enforcement, I guess, of principals and others to say, hey, looking back to it, they clearly said, they're not trying to create hoops for a kid, they're not trying to do this, they're trying to make it so that it's more flexible for the kid who's doing this, this, this. That kind of wording from the school board that's put into a policy can be very helpful, uh, to look back to.
Okay. So, thank you for attending, and thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for your presentation and for your work in this area. So, we will meet again at six-thirty for our regular board meeting.